Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the February 11th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. Ask you if you have pagers, cell phones, or similar devices. If you would silence those now, we would appreciate that. If you are not the applicant and you've come to talk to us about a case today, there are sign-up sheets on the table outside the chambers. If you would complete it, fill one out, and let us know which case you'd like to be heard on, we'd be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And Commissioners, the first order of business is the January 28th minutes move approval. Well, there are only four of...
No.
Oh, Buck just came in. Oh, good. Hi, Buck. We're on the minutes, the last meeting. Take a motion.
All right, good.
And a second? Good, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the January 28th minutes. Cast your votes, and Jim, you were not here. One more vote, please. Buck is number three. There we are. Now we have it. Thank you.
Okay, on to continuance requests. We have four uncontested requests for continuance, which I will read. Item B-18, case PC-10437, to defer that to February 25th. Item B-19 for case C-6787, to defer to February 25th as well. Item B-20 for DA-24507, defer to February 25th. And item B-21 for SPUD-860 is withdrawn.
Did anyone come today to talk to us about the cases that were just read, 18, 19, 20, and 21? We do have two people signed up to talk to us about 18 and 19. We will hear you at the end of the docket, which would be the order in which we typically hear those cases, if that's okay. Commissioners, a vote?
Move approval of continuances.
We have a motion and a second to continue items 18 through 21. Cast your votes. Those are approved.
We also have two new requests for continuance, which are item B-11 for C-6784, to defer that to February 25th, and item B-17, which is case PC-10442, also to defer to February 25th.
Same question again. Did anyone come to talk to us about items 11 or 17 on our agenda today? We have a motion and a second to approve the additional continuances. Cast your votes. Those are approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today? Mr. Box.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Dennis Box, and on item 13, my client has determined he left out a notch, so we're going to come back in and...
Left out of what, I'm sorry?
A little notch of property that he owns. And so I'd like to continue this case to April 28th. He's also determined there's a couple other uses they'd like to add on to it. So April 28th is the date we'd like.
Item 13?
13, yes.
To April 28th.
And I've coordinated with your staff, and they indicated that would give us enough time to add the additional property.
Okay, Commissioners? Mr. Box?
Yes.
You say you're adding some uses to 13?
Yeah, they've found a couple...
And you're subtracting, are you subtracting any?
I don't know. We think that there's a couple of additional uses that might be appropriate based on the surrounding uses, but if you have a desire that we take off a few uses, we'll meet with you and go through that.
I would strongly suggest you look at what can be taken off. Okay. That was going to be my suggestion as well. My first comment was what uses don't you want when I read the list? So...
We'll like them all, and we could sure work with you.
We'll be happy to talk with you about what those realistic uses are.
Okay.
Between, we have plenty of time between now and the 28th.
Sounds good.
But thank you for continuing it for that reason alone.
Appreciate it.
Any other requests from the public today? Okay, I'll take a motion to continue item 13.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item 13. Cast your votes. Okay, we are now ready for the consent docket.
Okay, we have three items on consent. Item one is for PC-10441 to rezone 2917 Northwest 29th from R1 to R2. Item two is case C-6794, the final plot of TFCU Westlake, located south of West Memorial and east of North Rockwell. And case item three is PUD-SP-1588 for a specific plan of PUD-1588.
Anyone come to talk to us about items one through three today on our docket?
I'll move the consent docket.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Under items requiring separate vote, item four is case PC-10443 to rezone 2129 and 2135 Southeast 44th from R1 and I1 to I2.
Is the applicant here? If you would, sir, give us your name and address, and just tell us what you're planning to do here.
Okay, I am Martin McKee. Business address is 1624 Southwest 122nd, and I am the realtor for both the seller and the buyer. The seller is here as well. The buyer is a company that's in three states, Texas, Oklahoma, and Arkansas. Name of the company is National Construction, and they're wanting to just store fencing equipment out on the property. That's why we needed the I2, just for that use.
Okay.
There will be nothing else, no hazardous equipment or anything, and I had them send me an email in regards to that as well in their letterhead.
Okay. No one has signed up, Commissioners?
I have... Tell me what's planned for this property?
The company is currently renting over on Southeast 29th, and so now they decided to buy, and they just deal in fencing, and so they're just going to be putting and storing some of their fencing equipment out on the property with the I2 zoning.
The concern that I have is that this is a straight rezoning from R1 and I1 to I2, and you want to do outdoor storage? Is that what you're going to do?
Correct, yes, sir.
And when you do I2, then you come under all sorts of ordinances that allow you to do virtually anything you want to on a property with fewer exceptions, one of which you could put a big old pole sign in front of you. And my question was, when I read this, why wasn't this an SPUD? I don't know why it is that, because they would tell us what you're going to do and what you're going to do with the property, because once it's bought, if we rezone it to I2...
Right.
Then, without any restrictions whatsoever, if this buyer doesn't work out, well, that property is left with straight I2 zoning, which is, you know, 30-foot, 40-foot pole sign, flashing lights, whatever, because the ordinances will allow you to do that under I2. If you had an SPUD, is there, are you going to take over a building? Is a building there?
Yes, sir. Yes, there is.
And so you're not going to tear it down and put another building up?
No. No, they're going to use the existing building.
But when I looked at the map also, I mean, you're around I1 and I1 and I1, but right across the way, it's zoned R1, and I don't know what is going to happen over there that I can see that there's, you know, there's fields, there's just open space behind you, right?
Right.
But it could be perhaps developed at some point in time. And then you have this, this arch, I mean, I2 property, you know, zoned straight, but if you had an SPUD, it says, "We won't do 50-foot pole signs, we won't do this, we'll do, if there's any residential, we'll do screening," just those little pieces that would make this property more compatible with what happens next. But I'd like to see an SPUD.
Well, I think we were originally thinking that if this didn't go through, that I2 would be good for a, another user was maybe the reason for that. So that's why we didn't do a spud on this.
Well, and that's, that's exactly my point, you know? Because you're now I2, and without any guides whatsoever, the next guy can do whatever they want to without coming to us at all. And it's an error that has been made for many, 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 many years. "Oh, let's just rezone that, and it'll be, you know, whatever it is." I would really prefer, if you would, come back in with an SPUD. I think this needs it on Southeast 44th. It's not a, you know, things will change, you know, they'll, I mean, you know, things will be different and better, and if you've got a property there that your client, you know, says, "Okay, this is what I won't do," it helps the whole neighborhood. It helps across the street, it helps the community, et cetera.
Good.
So my preference would be an SPUD.
And then just a revision to that?
Huh?
Just a revision to the same revision of the application?
Yeah. This is, you know, if there's residential around, and we're going to do site-proof fencing, you don't have to, because there's not any right now.
Right, right.
Is there a sidewalk in front? There may or may not be signage, you know, what kind of sign can you permit to have on that, on that piece of property? We have, you know, guidelines that we've adopted about signage, and to see if you're going to comply with those guidelines, or what do you want to do, you know? So that's my preference.
Okay, all right. Could we then continue this for next month with the spud hearing?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So what day do you want, I mean, two weeks or...
We need more than two weeks to file a spud.
What?
Need more than two weeks to file a spud.
Okay. Okay, that's...
March 10?
March 10.
Yeah, I was going to say for the next meeting, I think, would that be good?
March 10.
Okay.
I move that this be continued until March 15th.
Second, a motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item four to March 10th. Cast your votes, and it's continued. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item five is CE-928 to close the west 175 feet of the east-west alley in block 35 of the Belfords Bishop.
Commissioners, no one has signed up, and I missed the January 14th meeting. Anybody recall why this was continued?
Must have been on the list of discontinuances.
Okay. Give us your name and address, whoever, whichever one of you is going to be speaking or both.
My name is Dean Lemmons. I'm a real estate broker, and I represent Mr. Harold Smart in the transaction when he purchased his property. And he wants to close this alley here because he owns the properties on the north side of it and the south. So he wants it to be, and the purpose, I guess, is listed in your agenda. Basically, the purpose is to put the north and south together, basically just for future, future development. At this point, we don't know for sure what that would be, but it's going to be hard to develop with the, with the alley being a part of it.
Well, looking at what I'm looking at now, the alley does not look like it continues through the class on the east, does it?
There is a sewer, yes. It would be, it would be redirected, and we've talked to the people that, there's been some inquiries, and we've met with them and satisfied the people that was in...
You're talking about the property owners to the east?
Pardon me?
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no one has signed up.
Well, this, this drawing of where the alley, it looks like there's a building built right in the middle of the alley.
Yeah.
I mean, to, you see that, the line up there, it looks like that they've encroached on the alley anyway, to the east.
Well, the building that's there now is an old warehouse that's really kind of dilapidated and has no purpose. It's got an elevated floor, and it's going to be razed. Like I say, what the intention is to build something very nice there. This is the only exit coming off of I-40. It's, you know, it's one of the first businesses you can come to, and so Mr. Smart has some great ideas of putting things there that would make it look nice, and maybe a coffee shop or a high-top, class-top hotel, motel, a lot of different things. Of course, we'd have to get the appropriate zoning at that time.
Any other discussion? No, I move approval of the application.
I have a question. On this map application, is there a city council and to district court to be held? It's actually a three-step process.
Yes. Okay. So we have a motion and a second? Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item five. Cast your votes, please, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item six is PC-10440 to rezone 9600 South Sunny Lane from I1 and AA to I2.
I'm Randy Hill with ED Hill, 510 Call Core Drive, representing the applicant, Phil
And you want to go from I1 and AA to I2?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Are there any protesters?
I've got two signed up. Gary Vanoy, if you'd come to the microphone and give us your name and address and...
My name is Gary Vanoy, and I live at 9301 Southern View Drive, which is just behind this property, to the right to the east. I do have some materials I'd like to share with you. I didn't know, just a couple pictures, if I'm right.
You've got what now, I'm sorry?
Pictures.
Sure. I'll just give them to Pat there, and we'll pass them around.
Also have a past issue I would like to share as well. They'll have some prudence later on, and I will go quickly. I'm here representing the Southern View Homeowners Association. There are two other members of our association here as well that may want to speak. One of them is signed up. I wanted to point out in that picture that I showed you that the properties to the east of this area, these aren't postage stamps, these are five-acre estates, every one valued at or more than half a million dollars, every one being the what-all and end-all of what we have wanted to do with our lives. I apologize for not being a suit and tie.
It's all right.
I retired after 38 years at the post office, but I've still got a mortgage, so I'm still working, so I'll go back to work when we're done. We do pay some taxes. Before, I would see what's going on here, and as Mr. Bright so eloquently stated, you can do anything you want with an I2. Also, if you look at the picture, they already are. You'll see a number of tractor trailers that are on the properties now that are currently zoned AA or agricultural. We have to look at the back of those trailers every day. And I understand that I2, I guess residential would have to have a site-proof fence, but these are 14-foot trailers, so are you going to put an 18-foot fence up? I'd like to see an environmental impact investigation in this area because of the runoff of diesel fuels, so on and so forth. There's going to be a negative impact on property values, of course. We do have in our neighborhood a coyote issue, and that's coming from what you see is PUD-1434 in this area. I would like to look at the date of the Google Earth there. It's from 2015, and the relevance of this actual PUD-1434. If you would look at that particular square on those pictures, at the time they applied in 2011, there was a pit in the middle of that area filled with 55-gallon drums, junk, whatever. Nobody really looked at that area at the time. It was passed, they did clean it up. Now, there's been a whole lot of earth brought in. They cleaned it up by either burying everything or maybe removing it, but in their cleanup, they actually raised the elevation, and if you remember last fall with all of the torrential rains we had, everything from PUD-1434 ran down into the backyard of the family that lived right behind them, who were against that particular zoning change at that time. So there's a lot of things taken into consideration, and as you said, Mr. Bright, it gives them rights to do anything. PUD-1434 also was approved saying they would have a 100-foot free barrier between the property to their east, and that is that square in the picture there, and you can see they're right up against the property within 20 feet. So they're not complying with anything, and they're already, they're a PUD, so how can we expect an I2 to comply with anything? So that's about all I've got to say. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have a question on the PUDs talking about.
Well...
1434, is that it?
So do I, but go ahead.
The site and surrounding area, the subject site, 7.69 acres AA. North, it says it was I2 warehouse and outside storage, and the picture on this map shows that north it's AA.
Right.
So were we misled when this came up? That they, they were, that the designation of I2 being just to the north, when this picture shows it's AA, just to the north of this, of this PUD-1434?
I think probably you're right.
What we're talking about is the subject, the zoning north of the subject site is I2 and I1.
Well, the subject side is that square, and then right to the north of that, there's a bunch of trucks on there, but this picture says it's AA, which is the subject site now as opposed to the subject site for 1434, which is...
Right. I think you're getting the subject site for this application in 1434 confused. 1434 is to the south of the subject site, zoning to the I1 and I2 to the north.
JJ, what's the screening requirement?
Be a minimum, any? Six to eight-foot site-proof.
Okay. Have you seen this, JJ? We're speaking from this as well as the current application. Well, this is...
Okay, you've got 1434 outlined, which is an existing PUD with the subject site, which is AA north of that. The site in yellow is what we're talking about rezoning.
Oh, we know, we know that...
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm talking about what it says in the PUD that Rupert told...
For 1434.
For 1434. That north is zone I2 warehouse and outside storage. That would be north of that box that's 1434. And, and you're saying this land is I1 and AA in this application, not I2?
Right. Well, so zoning...
So the PUD document for 1434...
It has to be one or the other.
Well, it is what it is.
JJ, the site...
Yeah, I don't know.
The site north of 1434, which is the...
Is AA.
And not I2 as it was represented in that PUD document from 2011?
Right. Yeah, I don't know what they were talking about there.
So...
That looks like a mistake, and...
Mr. Bright's question is, did we not have an accurate view when we were looking at that in 2011? And Mr. Hill?
Right.
You're, you're applying now to obviously correct what's been done on the site?
We really don't have anything to do with the property to the south that's part of that PUD that's the junk...
We know that.
There. We're just, the property that's kind of clean as you look at that, and you'll see that we have a, have a open space at the back of our yard, and there's a large berm that's been constructed by the, by the owner of this property, and...
But my question is...
Yes, sir.
To you.
Yes.
Aren't we rezoning this to correct what's there now that should not be?
We're, yes, we are zoning a portion that's to the, the...
I mean, you've got a bunch of trailers parked on AA real estate and business on...
Part of that, part of our property is already zoned I2.
Say it's...
The map's a little bit off, and that property that's, property that's immediately north of the I2, that was part of the PUD, that was already zoned I2. And then the AA part is the back portion. It's currently zoned AA, and it does have trailers parked on, present on, and we are correcting that.
That's what I thought.
Right.
We have another person to address us, George Cook. And Mr. Cook, if you'd give us your name and address for the record as well, please?
Yes, sir. George Cook, and I live at 9400 Southern View Drive, and it's adjacent to the property there that you are discussing. In addition to the concerns that Mr. Vanoy has expressed, I just wanted to, to bring about the, a discussion on how it may affect that neighborhood itself. They're five-acre areas, families have put a lot into them over the years, they've got horses. We've got almost a three-acre pond located just to the east side of Southern View Drive, and we get a lot of the runoff and drainage down into our pond, which helps to keep it up. It's a very large pond, and we get a lot of runoff, and that runoff is, one of my prime concerns is if it changes, depending on the type of activity going on on that property, how's it going to affect the horses, how's it going to affect the wildlife? And I've got some pictures here, I'd just like to pass to you.
You can do that, if you give them to Mr. Ryan, please.
We have a large number of Canadian geese, numerous mallards, herons, cranes, just numerous ones all over that pond along with other wildlife activity, and it goes on year-round. You know, they don't, they don't disappear for long periods of time or anything, so there's just a lot of activity there, and I'm concerned about what, what this change may do to affect them.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Jimmy?
You know, I'm confused. I think this thing needs to go back. I think you need to continue it, and I think we need to draw up exactly what we want to do. I don't think this map or the map that we've got in our packet are telling us the real story on this thing. And I think before I could vote for it, I want to see a little bit more detail of actually what I'm voting for. And I, I do think, you know, you've got these actually illegal trailers parked back, and I'm a little bit concerned about that part of it. And I do think that you need to consider a 100-foot buffer along the east side... And I do think that you need to consider a 100-foot buffer along the east side along with the fence. And I don't think it ought to be, I think it needs to be something other than a stockade-type fence. So that's some things that I think you need to consider before you bring this back to us. And I would strongly suggest that you continue this thing for at least two weeks.
And you might want, might want to get with the neighbors in that period of time.
Yeah, we did not know there was a protest.
Sir, talk to us, please.
Yes, we did not know that there was a protest that had been filed until today. So the, but we'll be happy to meet with these neighbors and try to resolve any issues they may have. And, and also to show you what exactly is there today and...
I think you come back with a PUD or SPUD to show the restrictions...
This couldn't be in the...
The landscaping, the fencing, what you're going to use it for. Because this whole thing is a mystery to me about what we approved on the, on the property to, that little square thing that said through the north is I-2. And it's not. It's AA. And I'd like to know exactly what the zoning is. And then I'd like to know how it is that you, that somebody put in a, you know, two dozen trailers on AA property and said that that's okay. I, I've had a lot of questions about this. I'm in favor of continuing it, but I don't know if I'll approve it unless you have really significant protections for the neighbors to the, to the east.
And, and we thought that, that actually the thing, but we've visited with some of the neighbors over there before we've ever filed anything. But we'll be happy to go back and talk to them some more. And, and we'll continue it for four weeks to give us time to...
March 10th.
Excuse me?
March 10th.
March 10th, okay. To give us time to get with them and to...
Okay.
I'm on the move that we continue this till March the 10th on item number six.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second to continue item six to March 10th. Cast your votes. And it's continued. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven is C 6780, the final plot of Braxton, Section 2, located north of Reno and east of Frisco.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. On behalf of the applicant, also with me is Kendall Dillon. This is a final plat. It does conform to the preliminary plat. There are four TEs, all of which we agree with. We would ask for your approval and here to answer any questions.
No one signed up? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item seven. Cast your votes. And it's approved.
Thank you.
Item eight is PUD 1593 to rezone 3600 Northwest 164th from PUD 1382 to PUD 1593.
Mr. Chairman, Members of Commission, Brian Coon, Hugues Zollers, 2832 West Wilshire, representing applicant. You saw this case originally in October of last year of which we, it's actually in a current PUD 1382 with pretty much straight R4 zoning now. Our new PUD, I'm sorry, 11382, something else. But anyway, it was pretty much straight R4. We came in with a townhome-type product, 199 units. These protest letters that are in your packet were filed prior to that planning commission meeting. By the time we had that planning commission meeting, I think we had one protester show up. It was approved unanimously. We took it, went to city council. Since planning commission had happened until council, the market started changing, as you all know, here in Oklahoma City and around this country. And the developer started to realize, once this new zoning is in place, the R4 goes away. So he wants to keep the R4 in place just in case the market doesn't work for these 199 townhomes. The thing that's different today is that you still will have the restrictions that we put into the, the PUD that you voted on October as far as the heights. And I think that's probably why you're not seeing any protesters today, because the same restrictions apply for the height, the distance, the setbacks that were in that PUD that you approved in October. So really, all we're doing is trying to keep the R4.
We get more apartments in Ward 8, and we get triple the density as we might have before.
Yeah. Currently, it's R4. I mean, it's currently R4 zoning now. It's almost straight R4 until it goes... Well, we're, well, we're doing the new PUD, which has the townhomes. That's why we came in to rezone it in October. But what we did, when we did that, if we'd gone to council as is, the R4 would have gone away. So what he's wanting to do is he's wanting to keep the R4 alive just in case this new market doesn't work. This is kind of a, these are like six plexes of what you see over here in Bricktown. He's just, he was very excited about it, but with the market changing on him, as we've seen in the past couple of months, he's just afraid that he might sell 100 of these or 50 or whatever, or the market may not take it all. It's a different market for this part of town. So he just, he said, I want to keep my R4 option just in case. But we also have the new restrictions on R4 that are in the PUD, the height setbacks, all of that. So the same restrictions that you voted on in October are still in place. It's just we're wanting to keep the R4 alive if possible. If not, then it just stays R4. Townhome may go away. I'm not sure what, you know, I'll hear what you have to say, so.
I'm going to ask the same questions that I ask on the phone.
Yes.
If it goes, if it goes R4, how many units?
It could be over 600 because it's almost...
Okay, 600 units.
Which is what it's currently zoned now is for R4.
Okay. We have, and if it does go R4, it's only two-story, not three-story like shown in the, our packet?
If it's R4, it's whatever R4 will allow. But it would still, same height restrictions that the townhome has. We still have no three-story next to the homes, which is what we negotiated with the neighbors. You would still have that. You might have some three-story over on the western portion of it. This property, as you remember, when we talked about four slopes to the west quite a bit. So you could still have some three-story, yes.
Okay, but I think the negotiation when we zoned this originally, that it was two-story, period.
Next to the homes.
Okay. But would you be willing to say if it does go R4, that you'd stay with the two-story?
I don't know that I could agree to that, but I'll agree to the two-story restriction next to any homes, which is what the town, townhomes has three-story.
No, there's, there's, there's just a couple in here that show three-story on the elevation.
Yeah, let me show, let me...
Brian, just for clarity for all of us...
Yes.
We recommended the townhome rezoning to the council.
Yes.
The council never acted on that recommendation, so it was never taken...
That's correct.
...from R4, which is what it was before we saw it...
That's correct.
...to the townhome density.
That's correct. Mr. Stoner...
So it is still, I mean, what you're saying is it is currently zoned R4 because the council never acted. They just remanded it to us.
Yes.
And what you're asking for is to have us bless the R4 with all of the conditions that were negotiated with the neighbors and with us to begin with?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make...
Yes, here, this subdivision over here is called Ironstone. It's got two phases right now as built. This is fully built out. This is being built now. This is phase three. What we agreed to with the townhome zoning application you saw in October was no three-story buildings next to the homes. They're all two-story. And there was a 75-foot limit before you could get to a three-story building. So I'm, I'm fine, still fine with that, even if it's R4. There'll be no two-story buildings adjacent to the homes anywhere.
No three-story building?
No three, I'm sorry, no three-story adjacent to the homes. So we'd have a 75-foot setback before you could start a three-story building. And that's what we negotiated then. And what we decided, it was actually the morning of council at 7:30, Mark Stonerfer and I both decided, you know what, this is different than what we showed planning commission. Let's go back to planning commission and do this again. Because I didn't want to, I didn't want to try to pull a fast one. He said, if they didn't hear it this way, let's go back. So that's why we're back. But same restrictions, yes, Mr. Yocel, same restrictions.
How much of the density, how much density will be cut down if they, if it is R4 with those structures being two-story?
Um, it, it could be a lot. You know, real, you can't, I think R4 allows a 1,250-square-foot lot, actually. So you divide 43, 560 by 1,250, and it comes out to 34-something units per acre. I've never done a 34-unit acre apartment project.
Well, I think we need to stick to that because I think that was one of the big items with the protesters.
Originally, it, I mean, I don't know what it was originally. I know there was something quoted back then. I'll go back to whatever the restriction was on the current R4. I'm, I'm fine with that. We're not trying to ask for more than what we already had.
Okay. Do we have any protesters?
No one signed up. Well, Pat, this is different than what we were, what we were looking at earlier in the morning.
We're getting the R4 with these restrictions we had in here for townhouses.
Yeah.
My concern, Brian, is that you go in, the application said that you would have 199 townhomes. And then somebody's going to flip a coin and say the market's not there. And then you're going to be authorizing 699 apartments.
Well, we'll go back to the original number. It's not, it won't be a coin flip, I promise you. The townhome was a lot more, lot better deal because we, we were going to sell them.
Well, my, my question goes to traffic. There's been no traffic study at all. 199 townhomes doesn't create the density that 699 apartments do with one or two, you know, occupants in each apartment and, and where they're going to park, where they're going to drive and all that stuff. And why wouldn't there be a necessity for at least some study that this isn't going to just tie up everything with all the neighbors that are around?
It did not meet the criteria, the city's criteria for traffic study back then. It still doesn't.
With the townhomes, it wouldn't.
Well, even with the current R4.
Well, the key is, Bob, it's already zoned R4. We don't have any choice there.
He can build, that's true. He can build the apartments and not meet any of the things that were negotiated with neighbors before. So...
He's, but we, he's agreed, Brian's agreed to honor all the items.
Yes, absolutely.
Restrictions put in here for the town.
Absolutely. That's what we agreed with all the neighbors.
Now, one, one other concern that I have too, and we talked about this, the egress and ingress. The egress and ingress to the north is a boulevard-type thing, but it also goes in to the subdivision. Is there, I, I don't know why that they would want to use to go to the subdivision unless traffic backs up at that corner, then I can see cars going through the subdivision. Is there any way we can limit traffic from going through the subdivision if it does go R4?
You, you can't because it's a city public street. And what I told the neighbors at planning commission last time, I'll help them any way we can. If they want to close that street, if they want, I'll help them do that, which I can't. But I cannot put that in here because it's a public street. Fire Department wants it. That neighborhood's going to use Ironstone Drive mostly.
Okay, with that, let me ask our attorney, could we put a, a crash gate there if it become a problem?
Yes, put a crash gate there.
Okay, so that...
Eliminate that, eliminate the access into this PUD.
Okay.
From the neighborhood. Yeah, I think it, I think it would be worse on the neighborhood if we did that, actually.
I think we had a fairly lengthy discussion on that exact point in October when we...
Exactly, we did.
And we left it this way on purpose.
Right. I think we also discussed the egress and ingress off of Portland. And that's a boulevard-type, or a collector's street, though, isn't it?
It's a collector's street.
Yeah.
And if you, if you pan down on that drawing, Ironstone 3 will tie into our southern road. And so those neighbors over in Ironstone will soon get to go out to Portland. That'll be a road we build that they'll get to use. So all of a sudden, they're going to quit going to 164th. Traffic's bad. They're going to come home that way at the end of the day. They're not even going to go to 164th.
Well, I have no problem with those items. And if we can continue or keep the two-story where the two-story is supposed to be...
Absolutely.
And so on. And do we have any protesters?
We do not. And TE2 seems to take care of what you're concerned about, which is all the development conditions currently in the PUD for the townhomes remain.
In regard to the height and the windows and all that stuff, yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve according to what we have discussed as far as the two-story structures.
Yeah, and it's in the document that way.
And the possibility of a crash gate up on the north end.
And that'll be up to that neighborhood if they want to pursue.
And I guess that'd have to come back to the planning commission or go to the council or somewhere, wouldn't it?
Probably traffic.
Go to traffic commission, probably.
Okay.
Second motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item eight. Cast your votes. And it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, excuse me, I want to ask one more question.
Sure.
Does the owner now have the option of going into townhouses or apartments or strictly two apartments?
Yeah, he's got that option.
And you may see a combination. Didn't know what the market... Well, he wants to build the townhomes.
199 of them.
That's his, that's his goal. But again, with the market, we just don't know.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Item number nine is SPUD 866 to rezone 3704 Northwest 14th from R1, C3, and SPUD 431 to SPUD 866.
Applicant is not here. We'll move item nine to the heel of the docket.
Item 10 is SPUD 861 to rezone 1313 Northwestern from C4 and R3 to SPUD 861.
How's it going?
Your name?
Cheon Keppel.
And your address?
1313 Northwestern.
We've talked to you before, as I recall.
Yes, sir. I had a meeting with the neighborhood and I think we all agreed to some terms on the application.
Can you tell us what those are?
There's a few things they want us to build higher than three stories but would allow for rooftop, a restaurant without a drive-through. They also wanted to allow for a restaurant to serve alcohol.
That would be a separate application, you understand? If you wanted...
Yes, yes.
You want ABC one or two, you'd have to apply for it separately. So you're saying three-story with a rooftop? What?
Yeah, with rooftop, where you allow for rooftop access for a patio or just for a deck covered.
Would that be for residents, for business, or what are we looking at here?
It would, access for all tenants.
Will this have residential units in it? Will it be all commercial?
Yes, on the third floor. First floor would be commercial or, and second be office. Third would be residential.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't know I had to re-present this. I thought that it was already, since we had already talked about it before, I would have came a little more prepared to go over it again.
Mr. Bright, this is your ward. Has anybody signed up?
Yes.
Let's, let's hear that.
Well, there are a couple of people signed up in support, basically.
Yeah.
I mean, is what I'm reading, so...
Let's, let's hear what they say first, and then, then I have some comments about this. Okay, in that case, Jessa, Jessica Thompson, if that's correct? Pull that down and give us your name and address, please.
Jessica Thompson, 1414 Northwest 14th Street. We originally had submitted a continuance for this. Now, the Neighborhood Association and the Vice President speaking on behalf of them, we just want to let you guys know that we did speak with him and that we proposed some changes and that we approve of this but in its current state.
So the change, the changes that he's describing are the changes you've agreed to?
Yes.
Okay. What does she have to say? There's a lollipop I'd like to have.
She's pretty happy about it. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. And Jason Sylvester? Your name and address?
My name is Jason Sylvester. I live at 1121 Northwest 12th, which is, it backs up to the kind of west side, west corner of this property. I'm also removing my objection from this. I was one of the signatures on it. In addition to what he had said, we, we agreed to remove the automotive parking and a, as a principal use. We agreed to remove the eating establishment, fast food, no drive-through business. The lodging accommodations or commercial lodging would also be removed. And we agreed on the possibility of the ABC 2, if that's something he wanted to go after. Also, the three stories with a maximum, maximum three stories with allowable rooftop. We just wanted to clarify that as a difference, and we don't want four stories, but we're okay with that. And then also the historic brick alley in the rear of the property, if it's utilized or anything, it will be maintained and kept to its... If it's utilized or anything, it will be maintained and kept to its standards that it's at right now. I believe that is all I have. Yeah, I just sent. So... And we also didn't have any objections to the billboard on the property. He had spoke about possibly utilizing it as part of the design of this building in one way or another, but we didn't, we don't have objections to it staying, so...
Is the electronic message board okay?
If it's cool.
How do we know, how do we establish that?
We've got to get hip experts out to check it out.
Yeah. By then, it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you.
No? I like this application. It's an area that's very familiar to anybody that worked downtown and went on Classen at Little Convenience Store and filling stations of Onmet right there and then along Western. If you do what the conceptual plans indicate, if you do that, I think it'll be a really nice addition to what could be described down western south as the beginning of a renovation of that street. It's, I think it's a good one. I like what the conceptual plan is. I'm really curious as to what the actual plan's going to be, but you're going to come back with a site plan, materials, et cetera, that you're going to be using there. One thing that I don't, I would like to actually see that billboard being gone. That's a real obnoxious billboard. And I can't imagine how that could be incorporated into your plan, into this conceptual plan. I think it'd just be an albatross around the neck of a really good project. So I'd like to see the non-accessory sign go and no EMD signs.
Yeah, I understand. They had brought that up, and then on the building, the design I was wanting was a New York-style building. That would be brick, kind of, kind of what you see in the picture. And with those kind of buildings, they have huge signs and the people advertise actually on the building. So that's why I was trying to figure out some kind of, incorporate that in.
Well, the preference would be on the TEs, you know, that goes away, and then there'd be no EMD signs, no flashing electronic signs. Because that's real obnoxious to the neighborhood, to the south.
Yeah, I would do that.
And then other people, you know, that are there.
Right.
I'd prefer to see that.
Right.
Not part of your plan.
And we discussed in the meeting with them how different artists could feature something on the sign. I mean, we went into detail on that for a while. I mean, it could be, you know, I was wanting to work it in, and as I hired an architect and try to figure it out. And if it didn't make sense, I'd tear it down, but I'd like to leave as an option, maybe, when we do bring the plans, if it's in there, just for you guys to just look at it at least.
We would do that.
Yeah, and if it looks stupid, if it looks stupid, we'll take it down.
Because the site plan approval, there's going to be the same exercise that you're doing now.
Okay.
You know, we haven't yet approved exactly what it is you're going to do on that property. We've got to come back and show us that if you can incorporate that big giant obnoxious billboard into your plans, power to you. But I'm not, I'm not sure that that's, you know, but we'll, we'll look at it. So based upon, on EMD signs, I really don't think that you need EMD signs.
Okay.
Well, that could come back to us as well. I mean, if it's something that's incorporated into the design of the building, maybe, as he's describing, you might like it. So you just, well, no, okay. We'll just leave it like, we'll, we'll leave it like this. So, say upon approval or something like that. You need to incorporate the changes that were discussed with the neighbors. Three-story with, with a rooftop.
Yeah.
Restaurant, no drive-through, first level's commercial, second's office, third's residential. Remove the automobile parking as a primary use. Remove lodging as a use. And those were the key changes I heard.
And allow the ability to go ABC2.
That's a separate application, that's a...
That would just be us not...
Not restricting that.
We're not saying we're opposing it.
That, that's... Still has to come back to us and ABLE Commission both, so we don't even need to address that today. So with that list of revisions in the PUD, I'm of approval. Okay.
I'm sorry, and also the maintaining of the brick alley.
Yeah, there's an alley.
Something, you're, I mean, somebody's writing them down? Maintain the brick alley? Do we have a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 10 as conditioned, as I just read the items. Cast your vote, and you approve. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Item 11 is continued. Item 12 is C6739, the preliminary plat of West Ferry Morgan located north of Southwest 29th and west of Morgan Road, and to request a variance.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Callacord Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Kendall Dillon, the civil engineer on the project. This is the preliminary plat. This is the old Westbury Golf Course. This was the PUD that came before this commission not too long ago. And at the time, when we were discussing it, we knew and told the commission that because of the unusual layout of the site, that there would be some variance requests. So what we have are 10 TEs in the staff report. Items 1, 2, and then 6 through 10, we do agree to. So we do have 3, 4, and 5 that require variances. So I'd like to visit about that briefly. Show me that side. One of the main points of contention with the neighbors when this PUD was going through was their desire to not have Track 2 connect to Track 1. They didn't want this to become a thoroughfare for people just trying to avoid certain intersections. We agreed to do that. And in addition, we went from about 65 lots on Track 2 to 50. But what that did, and what we told the commission it would do, is require some variances. So because of our agreement with the neighbors, we have some variances now dealing with fire and access. So we have met with Mike Wilson in the Fire Marshal's Office. What you see highlighted in blue, both in Track 2 and Track 3, are areas in which we have agreed to sprinkle, and I believe that satisfies the Fire Marshal's Office. And then we also have, again, the same issue down here in Track 3. So we do believe that we've satisfied both the neighbors, staff, and the Fire Marshal's Office. We'd be happy to answer any additional questions, but this does conform, almost identical to the master development plan map that was approved as part of the PUD that I have here. So if you remember back, this is what is approved as part of the PUD, again, which almost mirrors the preliminary plat that now comes before you. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any additional questions, and we would ask for your approval.
Any questions, commissioners? We do have somebody signed up.
Mary Garrison, 2005 Edinburgh Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Thank you.
And I'm here with maybe not a protest, but questions. First of all, we were not able to see this before today, so we're pretty much unaware of what, what he presented. And the first question I have is if you received a letter from Mr. Barnes. He was before the planners last month, and he travels a lot, and so he's out of town. And he wrote this letter, but I think he didn't get it in to the 24-hour ahead of time. So do you all have access to this?
It's been passed around to us, or it was on our desk when we got here.
Okay. So if I may just call, call your attention to a few points in it.
Okay.
A few things that he was especially concerned about. First of all, we met with the planner, Mr. Box. They were very nice in meeting with the neighbors and trying to work out some of our concerns, and we appreciate that. And we know we had very little to deal with. They had, they pretty much held all the cards, but they were very nice in allowing us to voice our concerns and meet some of those concerns. What we still, what Mr. Barnes is still concerned about is that in the original, when we first came up with this new plan, there was going to be one house behind it, and now there are two. And he thinks there's no buffer, which a buffer was agreed to originally. But his main concern, I think, is about the alley and driveways. And Mr. Barnes actually went to another development that is similar to the, to this Morgan plat and drove around. And we've been told that most of the 55 and older people only have one car. Well, I'm way over 55, and my husband and I each have a car. And when Mr. Barnes drove around in this area, he said it appeared to him that there was parking everywhere because there were, there was not sufficient parking allowed for more than one car. So that's one of his really big concerns, that people were parked so that, especially, he's concerned that fire trucks could not get through the way he observed that they were parked. So he's concerned about that. He is concerned that he wasn't able to see the actual plat. He, he is very interested in making sure that there's a buffer between his home and these new homes that are going in. And then finally, he closes with saying he's coming into this a little late in the game. He wants to be actively involved. He knows that this is not going to be a golf course, but he wants this new community to be the best that we can expect to not affect our houses anymore than are already being affected. He bought his house as a property on a golf course, and now it's going to be a house with other houses behind it. So, like I said, our, our question, this is an R3 area, our question was mostly concerned with the parking, and that may or may not be addressed in what we were shown today because we haven't seen it before.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of not having seen it before, again, what they have seen for months and months and months is the master development plan map, which, again, mirrors the preliminary plat. The preliminary plat hasn't changed since we filed it. So there's, there's been no change, there's been nothing to revise to show them. When we look at Track 2, the reason that it has changed, and there might be a portion of a second lot behind this gentleman's house, is at the request of these neighbors, they wanted the same deal that this neighborhood to the south got, that being a residential street buffering them rather than the backyards of people. And so what we agreed to do was to move the street to that northern edge so that they didn't have backyards up against them, but rather had that street. We have plans and have committed to do so. We will landscape on the north edge of that street. You can see, if this white line weren't here, if you look in detail, there are trees shown. So, right behind this gentleman's house will be a portion of landscaping and then the street, and that was at their request because they didn't want a fence up next to them. They lived on a golf course before, they wanted a bit of an open field. In terms of the alleys being a concern, again, we met with Fire Marshal's Office, we're sprinkling, that satisfied their concern. There is additional parking in little enclaves throughout this development, very similar to Murfield Village, Edinburgh. And in terms of his comment about late in the game, I do think it's important that this commission knows that after city council, we had a sit-down meeting with this gentleman. We left that meeting, and he was going to go back to his neighbors, and they were going to see if they possibly wanted to buy a couple lots. He has my contact information and Mr. Dillon's, as well as my client. When we left that meeting a month or so ago, told him, "Don't hesitate to call us," and we haven't heard back from him. So we have done everything we can at every turn to meet with the neighbors over and over and over again. What we have now is a plat that, while a bit unusual, maybe even unique, it conforms to everything...
My favorite word.
To, to everything that we agreed to do through the zoning process. And so we would ask for your approval for this preliminary plat.
What are the parking provisions for Track 2 per unit?
We did, in the PUD, we limited through the PUD to one parking unit required per unit because of the age restriction of 55 and older. So we did that, but we've also permitted the parking to count inside the garage, but as well as that, we have on-street parking or on, and as well as common areas that we're allowed to park in. So through those things, we're confident in this type of development that we'll be able to, to do the parking. And I think our developer and client, he's not interested in having people blocking the alleys and the streets, so parking's something that he's going to deal with. And in regards to, I think, the neighborhood that they may be referring to, because it's not one of our client's projects that they're looking at, I think one of them that we mentioned that was close proximity to this one that they could look at that was a similar setup was the Settlers Ridge Edition. However, if you go in and look at that one, that's not age-restricted. That's just, it is gated, but that's just a standard single-family residential neighborhood. Thus, the parking is more than what I think we anticipate and what my, our client sees with the two developments in the same manner that he's got right now. So we're pretty confident it complies with what's written into the PUD, and we don't think there'll be any issue.
Maybe in the PUD, but I'm a little concerned. I mean, 55 is what, the new 35, and...
I wish.
Yeah. Doesn't quite feel that way, but...
So the, this hasn't changed? It doesn't look like it's changed to me, has it? There's been no changes to this, right?
No, there...
The lots are all laid out the same as they were.
This is the carbon copy of the master development plan, and it conforms exactly to what we have in the PUD.
I thought it did, I was, I'm just asking that to clarify, just to be clear.
Yeah. So it, it conforms, the parking is in accordance with the PUD. And like I say, especially given the nature of it, we don't think that there's any issue. We don't, it'll hurt our marketing if there is. So our client, we have ample room to make sure that we have enough parking, especially with that demographic that it's limited to. And so we think it's a good plan, and it'll work fine.
And, and this has been reviewed by the Fire Department?
Yes.
And there were no concerns there? These are going to be sprinkled dwellings? But they didn't have any concerns about the streets, the width of the streets, the issues Is there anyone else signed up?
No one signed up, and I think it's okay to go, go with this. Does raise an interesting question, though, as we look at 55 and up proposals in the future. Because I know a couple 55-year-old people around the horseshoe here who have more than one car and maybe three. And I think, frankly, realistically, one car for a couple who are anywhere from 55 to 75 years old is unrealistic. So, we have three variances, Buck, if you want to move on this. 3, 4, and 5.
So I will make a motion that we approve variances to TEs 3, 4, and 5. Can we do them together?
Let's do them one at a time.
3.
Yeah. A second? Okay, we have a motion, second, to approve the variance to TE3. Cast your votes. That's approved.
And the motion to approve variance to TE4?
We have a motion to approve variance to TE4. Cast your votes. That's approved.
And a motion to approve the variance to TE5.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance to TE5. Cast your votes. That's approved.
And now we'll move to approve the application.
And we have a motion and a second to approve item 12. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 13 was continued to April 28th. Item 14 is S.P.U.D. 865 to rezone 10301 northwest Midwest City Boulevard from double A to S.P.U.D. 865.
Is the applicant here?
My name, it's Ty Burrows. I live at 5900 North Choctaw Road in Choctaw.
Okay. And you're just splitting a lot, down, five acres down the middle?
Correct.
No one has signed up, commissioners? There is a letter in the packet, the opposition to the zoning change, that I think has convinced me to not support this application because once you start dividing things up in a five-acre...
Because once you start dividing things up in a five-acre area, which was fully five-acre, it opens the door to increased density and incompatibility with what people out there have expected. And that's just my comment, and I agree with the author of this letter, the Colshes, of what their concern is.
No one has signed up, commissioners?
Well, one question I would have, and I'll get to that in a minute, but Bob, one of the things I think that is perhaps a little misleading and perhaps even missing from the report, you, I think, delve into it a little bit deeper, you discover that this is not really the first property that has been split in the area. This particular area, I think that's correct, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, JJ? Okay. And while it made the argument made sense from those who were protesting, when you really look at the broader picture, and you don't really see it in our report, you find other properties that have been split. And when you look at this property, you're still talking about 2 and 1/2 acre, 2 and 1/2, so it still meets that requirement. And so I think that's something to take on into consideration. I think others may be able to speak to that, maybe staff or others. But my question would be, are you good with understanding that both of these properties could not exit onto Midwest Boulevard, but that they would use 100 and, what is the street, 100 and Second Street? So that one property on the corner would not, driveway would not exit onto Midwest Boulevard, but would exit onto 100? Are you good with that?
I'm good with that.
It's a TE? Yes, it's a TE.
I did see the opposition letter, and I was concerned because I wouldn't want a neighbor to be upset with us at all. We thought it was very conducive with the area. I build homes in that area, we buy property. This one has had devastation of fire through many of that street of 102nd. We were going to put two nice houses there, and they came off 102nd, or one was originally off of Midwest Boulevard. And we were just going to add one more in the back of the hill, it's 700 feet long, and we thought it would add a value to everybody. I never would have wanted to upset anyone. And I did give the staffs, give anyone my number, and I've had a few phone calls from neighbors, and they just want to make sure I didn't put trailers there or something that would devalue their homes. I paid a pretty good chunk for the property, I'm not going to put a junk house there, we build good ones.
Some of these properties are pretty, they have pretty expensive homes
Yeah.
In the area.
Sure.
And can you just give us just an idea of
Neighbor directly across the street.
What you're talking about for those two homes?
They were 24 to 3,000 foot. I'm building, I built two 2,500-foot homes a half a mile to the south currently on 95th Street. One is being finished right now. The neighbor that is directly south of this called me and said, "I just want to make sure that this is going to help my property." And I said, "Most definitely. These are all 24 to 3,000-foot home, they're going to be between 275 and 450 for that property." I would never want to have made the neighbors upset by something just crammed in there. They're individual, either a custom or one of my spec homes that people like and buy. I did ask the staff to tell anyone to call me, and I would talk with them, and have talked to quite a few. I have not had the opportunity to speak with the Colshes. I would be glad to. I believe their concerns are valid, but I'm not lowering any value, and I want to make it good for them. Just adding one more home, and I believe there's four other properties on that same street that are less than two acres already, that just once they got annexed into Oklahoma City, get stopped being done that way. I think I included those in the packet. So it was meeting conducive with that dead-end street. Does that help any?
No one signed up?
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of this application.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 14, cast your votes, and they're approved.
Item 15 is C. 6776, the final plat of Calm Springs, Section 2, located east of Kilpatrick Turnpike and south of Britton Road, and requesting variance.
Good afternoon, Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. And obviously, Phase Two Final Plat of Calm Springs, there's, I think, six TEs. Six TEs, we're in agreement with all six of them. I will mention on TE number three, we are asking for variance in regards to access. If you, the staff report, I think that you have, the map in the back may be a little different than what's on the screen. This is the updated plat that we submitted back in January, and you'll notice a couple of difference, that that southwest 87th Street originally was a cul-de-sac. Now you can see that it has looped through, so that it creates a loop, and then you'll also notice on that exhibit where we have worked with Mike Wilson in the Fire Marshal's Office, and we will construct that 20-foot temporary emergency access there as shown on that exhibit. So with that, I think Fire Marshal's Office is okay with it, and we'd ask for your approval.
No one signed up?
Has a Fire Marshal approved what your plan is?
Yes. I visited with him last week, and as long as we moved, originally, we had the emergency access that kind of followed a future street, went all the way back out to the arterial. It was awfully long, and he was concerned about keeping, maintaining it during the construction process. So that's the reason in working with him, that we decided the best thing to do would be to move it to the location shown. And so I think as long as we move it there and maintain it throughout the construction process, he's okay.
Okay, we do have a variance to TE three, no one's signed up.
I'll approve the variance.
Second motion. We have a second, motion is second to approve the variance to TE three, cast your votes, and that's approved.
And I'll move the application.
Second motion. We have a motion and a second to approve item 15, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Item 16 is C. 6792, the final plat of The Brook, Phase 1, located north of Northwest Expressway and west of North Piedmont Road, and requesting a variance.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson, Johnson &amp; Associates, here on behalf of the applicant. We asked for this item to be continued last meeting to make sure we could cure TE number four without a redesign of the plat, and we've determined we can. We've submitted a draft of that to the staff. It's, just changes a couple lot lines to allow us to meet that criteria, not having a drive on the circle. So we've solved that.
Okay, so there are no drives on the, around about anymore? So we do not need TE four?
We can say yes to TE four because we fixed it.
Okay, all right.
We do require variance because of our very limited frontage on Northwest Highway. We've run the Boulevard back in, which is a little bit longer than the 300-foot, and so that's the variance that we're asking for on item number three. We're in agreement with all the other TEs. Request your approval.
Again, no one signed up, commissioners? Chair can't make a motion, Tim, so... We have a motion and a second to approve the variance to TE three, cast your votes, that's approved. We have a motion and a second to approve item 16, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 17 was continued, and items 18 and 19, although they were continued, we do have people signed up to speak.
And we moved item nine to the heel of the docket. Is anyone here to represent item nine? No?
Sorry, would you please get it represented?
I'm sorry? Suggest we continue this to, yes, to 225. Take a motion to continue item nine to 225? Second, somebody? Okay. We have a motion and a second to continue item nine to February 25th, excuse me. Cast your votes. You usually know they're supposed to be here, but sometimes. Now we'll hear from the people who wanted to talk to us about items 18 and 19.
Hi, Sherri Compton, my address is 10608 Southwest 21st Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. And I represent the Mustang Creek Homeowners Association with regards to these actions that have been asked to be approved. Pointed out at the last meeting, not everyone was here. I'd like to say that Mustang Creek is the only addition that is adjacent to this request to rezone from agricultural to housing. And we've submitted a petition opposing this at the last meeting in January that we were there. We have added another 40 signatures to that petition, bringing it up to a total of 116 out of 151 homes opposing this. That's 77% of the residents represented. The neighborhood remains concerned about the traffic on Sarah Road. As stated, Mr. Grubbs isn't here, but I know this was recorded last time. He stated that he didn't do a traffic study of Sarah because every one that's done, the traffic study fails miserably. So the solution to that is to do impact fees to every home that's built, and I don't think the impact fees have been approved yet to be done, but that. The rezoning, he's asking for an additional 202 homes. And unlike the group before me, I know every home has at least two cars. So you're adding 404 cars, and that's probably a conservative estimate. If you've got teenagers, you've got more. His proposed ingress and egress to this is a concern to us, as he expects to use to stub in back to Sycamore, which is the back street to our neighborhood. He's only got room to put one out at the front because the area is so narrow that goes out on Sarah Road from where he's proposing this change. So we're concerned about that, and I just don't think that's a good idea. And he submitted a little bitty change on the plat on this, for this meeting. It was a stub out to 23rd, which is one of the streets going through his new addition. It stubs out to a non-existent road. So I don't know how that's going to help him with ingress and regress at all. The neighborhood has voiced many, many concerns about the traffic on Sarah Road. We've talked to the city, we've talked to our council. We're always told that it's going to take a bond issue, and it's not time for a new bond issue. And we will deal with Sarah Road later down the road. It's become glaringly apparent to anyone who lives in the area that later is now. With all the housing going in down in there, it's just ridiculous. So I think it's going to have to be addressed sooner than later. Mustang Creek, the residents remain firm on the opposition of both of these for the rezoning and also for the plat that's been submitted. And we like to see it denied, but anyway, that's our stand on that. I see that Mr. Grubbs has been given an extension to the 25th of February. We would like to see you give him a 90-day extension instead of a two-week one. He's had a month, he didn't do anything different, so we're thinking two more weeks isn't going to help him, so maybe you could push that out a little bit. Thank you for your time today. I appreciate it.
I'll explain the stub to the west to you. Your neighborhood has a stub to the west
Yes, we do.
But no, we're also
Off 20th.
And the point of that is connectivity is one of the things we think is important between neighborhoods for the smooth flow of traffic. So we promote connections between neighborhoods and to anticipated neighborhoods, which is why you have a stub and why one is proposed for them.
21st Street.
I'm not speaking about the quality of the application, whether it ought to be approved or not, but
Yeah.
I just wanted to explain why they stub those.
I get that. We're hoping there's a road back there someday, but maybe down to 29th from this new addition, but probably not. If you look, 21st Street is a straight shot from Sarah Road back to Sycamore through my neighborhood. There's no stop signs, there's slow, slow. I live on 21st, I'm three houses in from Sarah Road, and it's a racetrack. And we are concerned with what this is going to do to our traffic too.
That's not a good design, I might add.
Pardon?
The racetrack is not a good design idea, by the way.
No, it's not, but it's there, and we're trying to live with it. But thank you so very much for your time.
You're welcome. Sheila Williams?
May I give you these added signatures?
Sure.
Or another way?
Yeah, give them to our secretary here. Thank you very much. Thanks for waiting.
Sheila Williams, I live on 21st Street at 10704 Southwest 21st Street, Yukon, and our property will, but against this new subdivision that goes in, so I am very much, my husband and I will be very much be affected by this, this change, if this is allowed to happen. We've been there since 2008. I came to the last meeting, and I want to point out, of all the people that have been in opposition, we have six that showed up today. That is a strong statement. Get six people to agree and show up and give up their afternoon is a big statement, and I just want the council, if you would please, to note that. We care deeply about our homes and our neighborhood. Safety issues, I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother, I'm a nurse. So I'm going to speak from a couple of different angles from all three of those positions. Safety issues, there is two roads that go in and out. We have parks. We have lots of children walking and playing in those neighborhoods and riding bikes in those streets and on the neighborhoods, and we love that. It is a family-safe place. We don't have 200 houses, we have less than that. And if you add double houses and traffic, and maybe triple traffic if you have three cars per household, which is very feasible, all of that streaming through these two streets is going to be where you can hardly cross the street. It's going to be an unsafe environment for our children, trying to go from one side of the street to the other. It concerns me that there's also across the road at Westbury, you have this new 55-plus living facility that has already got a road built in just right at the two roads coming from our subdivision. You have a creek on either side of our subdivision. Creek means water. Creek means mosquitoes. Creek also means that the rain that falls does not get absorbed well because the drainage is not absorbed well. In our own backyards, it stands. As a nurse, it concerns me because of this sickle virus that is already in Texas, and I guarantee you by the summertime, it will be in Oklahoma. It causes childbirth defects, small heads, small brains, lower intelligence. It causes myasthenia gravis to adults who can no longer walk. It is a very vicious, vile, wicked disease that is one state away. All that has to do is bite, one mosquito that's healthy has to bite another person or another animal who's been bitten by an infected mosquito. And then when they bite the next person, they give them this virus. And it goes on and on and on. It's an established fact that the mosquitoes will bite four or five healthy hosts a day.
We're sort of getting away from the zoning question we've got here.
Okay. But to me, that ties in with the water there that surrounds Mustang Creek. So that also ties in with these 200-plus houses who will have rooftops and that will cover the ground. You will have cement roads that cover the ground, you will have sidewalks that cover the ground, which will, in addition to the creeks, not make the ground absorb water well.
So is there anything else about this particular application?
I think it's unfair that the pre-existing proposed, um, building that they're wanting to do, that subdivision is going to be allowed to tie into Sycamore.
Okay.
Because of the traffic and it just, to me, it seems like it ruins our homeowners', um, thing that we have going there, the, the privacy, the safety of, of that. And it just is bothersome to me. And I didn't know until today that Mr. Buck was our, um, councilman, so I look forward to having you help work with us and to listen to our heart. And I appreciate you.
Thank you very much. We'll be back with this item in two weeks evidently. Thank you for taking the time to be here today.
The rest of the items have been deferred or withdrawn.
Okay. Uh, planning commissioners?
I've got a couple things. That's really why I asked Tim to stay. Um, in this, I'm going to ask if it's possible for our staff to look at, um, getting away from stockade fence or screening. And I know, and Tim, maybe you can add something to this, um, the type of fencing, the masonry type fence that comes in panels. There's not a whole lot of difference in pricing with that as, uh, as a normal wood fence is, is that not correct? I mean, I know they're, they're more expensive, but that, not that much more.
Well, the, uh, a well-built cedar fence is about the same price as a panel masonry fence.
Okay.
But a, a stockade fence that is permitted under our code is well below a well-built cedar fence.
Okay.
So there's probably a, at least a 50% cost difference, if not more.
Hmm. The, the actual concrete panels that they put up?
Yeah, concrete panels and a, and a well-built cedar fence, like we've negotiated on a few PUDs, the neighbors adjacent to us wanted the cedar fence as opposed to concrete panels. They're about a wash cost-wise. But a stockade fence is probably a third of the cost of those well-built fences.
Okay. Um, I was misinformed then because I, I understood that it was probably about a 25 to 40% increase and more likely the 25% increase.
Yeah. The, uh...
But...
The code permits wooden posts and, and standard stockade panels like you can buy at Home Depot. That's a lot cheaper than galvanized posts and cedar runners, which is what's on a well-built cedar wooden fence.
I think, you know, after the windy week that we've had, I'm telling you, there's a lot of stockade fence, even with metal post down. And even, once they get down, whether they're getting, they're put down by the wind or somebody ran into them, they're awfully hard to get back up. We have no, as far as I know, we have no ordinance or anything that will make them repair those type things. And I think that's something that we need to look into is screening, uh, uh, screening fences. And the next thing is on, I, on industrial zoning, when we have, uh, heavy equipment, trucks and so on and so forth, I think our ordinance says that it can be on gravel. And I think that's something else that we need to look into that we, some kind of hard surface that will eliminate some of the dust, like these people are going to contend are putting up with right now that, on the case that we just got through looking at. Um, and I think that's something that, uh, we need to take a look at. And I've got one other thing. Well, but, but that case that we just did...
Yeah. PUD 1434 that said, that's an I-2 and it was AA. I love the stat. I think you guys do great work.
Great, I think you do great work, you know, but, but somebody missed the ball on that particular PUD by, you know, allowing them to have a PUD that said, "That's I-2 zoning," when in fact it was AA. And now they've got two dozen trailers on it affecting all those people to the east. I just, you know, it just was kind of like, well, and I appreciate the fellow that came up, the, the neighbor that really did his homework and said, "Here's the PUD and then here's the, here's the aerial and these are AA." And then showed the portion that had two dozen trailers on it that still AA. And I don't know if these neighbors complained, you know, I would have if that had been my property next to it, but, but that's, but, so I'm just following up on what you say. I have another subject. I've asked several times, does the parking lot at the new Sam's Club store on 39th and May comply with our landscaping requirements for parking lots? And the subtext is if it does, we need to work really hard on changing landscape ordinances to provide for trees to be planted in the midst of the parking lot, like the Lowe's store just right across the highway. You know, they've got, you know, islands with trees in them. Well, this is a flat asphalt thing, not a tree in it. And, and the curiosity is, we do have landscape ordinances that apply to parking lots, right? No matter where they are, but this is zoned I-2. Is that exempt? And I'd like to have an answer. Just have somebody go out there and say...
Maybe they're not finished. Maybe they haven't...
Oh, but then they'll have to, they'll have to dig pretty big islands in the middle of this.
Oh, okay.
They're not dug. You know, there, there's another thing too. I, I think that we, we need to be really, really careful about getting away from our straight zoning and making them plan unit developments just to eliminate signs and some of the other things. But it, it, you know, if we, if we want to eliminate the height of signs, let's make a change on those zonings, the straight zonings and let's, let's, you know, so that we don't have, it costs a lot of money to do a, a plan unit development or a spud, either one, quite a bit more than straight zoning. And, you know, we're already taxing people with, with, uh, you know, some of the other costs that, especially in, in the industrial part, you know, with the, the new, um, I can't think of the, the term, that we just got through passing the ordinance for, uh, impact fees. So I think we need to be careful there also, you know.
They're not adopted yet either.
I understand that. But the, but the new plan, Jim, the plan that we adopted anticipates zoning ordinance changes for signage, for landscaping, you know, there's all those elements that are in the new plan to change all that and it just has to be a matter of time before the municipal councillor's office drafts an ordinance.
There's a, there's a lot more to it than that.
Oh, no. No, but the, but, but it's a, it's an ongoing process that the new plan requires. And, and speaking of impact fees, congratulations to you on the article in the Gazette about impact fees last month, last week, I think it was. Nice picture and nice article.
He gave me all the credit for impact fees.
Thank you, Tim. We will likely have a short workshop before the next meeting on, uh, the application process and subdivision changes related to that. Will we not?
When is the next planning commission workshop, Randy?
I'm not asking for a workshop. I'm saying a study session.
For which item?
The preliminary plat process, complete application process changes.
At the recommendation of council, we're changing the approach on that, so I don't know that it'd be ready for next week. Uh, we're, we're looking at possibly doing it at a UDC in March. So it would be a, a change to the bylaws, I think is the new direction for that.
Change to the bylaws?
Planning commission bylaws.
And what else?
That would handle the problem for the subdivision.
So then we'll have to change subdivision regulations?
No.
Yes or no? I mean...
Maybe I'm not following your total, your question.
I'd decide it'd be better to do it as an amendment to the, uh, bylaws of the commission rather than make a subdivision, uh, regulation on it.
Okay. I thought just a policy change was good, but okay, bylaws is fine. And we can do that how fast?
Um...
I mean, that's just us, right?
Right. Yeah.
Can we do that in, for our next meeting in February or is that too soon?
Sorry, what? I didn't hear that.
February 25th is too soon?
I'm, I'm not sure. That's up to JJ. It's on his schedule, so...
I've been working with JJ. I think it'll get through on your 25th.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to hear. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay. Planning Department, Aubrey? Development Services, nothing? Municipal Councillor?
I just got, I have this memo that I prepared for you last year or year before I asked on, uh, planning statutes. I gave Commissioner Ryan one, I'm going to give Commissioner Cooper one, if anybody else would like one. Uh, if you had, probably threw it out and forgot about it by now, but it does, it does a pretty good survey of the planning statutes that, that...
I'd like to read it again.
Okay.
I'm sure I've got a copy, but...
I meant, well, you do now. Give Mr. Cooper one?
Hmm? I think you, I think you can give them all away.
I think I did.
Dan, thank you.
Sure.
Do you want to email it to me or something? Okay. Citizens to be heard. Any other business? Motion to adjourn? We are adjourned at 3:17.